First, welcome.
Chairperson Jim Sawtell. Vice Chairperson Robert Lohmar.
Here.
Commissioner's Joanne Eaton. Phyllis Hargenskeen. Mark Wicks-Laces.
Here.
Jerry Melman.
Here.
Jason Reese.
Here.
Tom Ricker. Anthony Stewart.
Here.
Leonard Red Fox.
Here.
Attorney Liz Cross. Associate Planner Lisa Ritchie.
Here.
Before we get to approving the agenda, I wanted to introduce two new members of the Planning Commission. If you could stand so we all can see who you are. Jason Reese. Thank you. And Anthony Stewart. Next order is approval of the agenda. I have a motion of approving what we're going to do tonight.
I move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second? A second? All in favor?
I'm sorry, can you say this second?
I'm sorry. Commissioner Amelia. Commissioner Laces made the motion. Commissioners, I'll second it. All in favor? So indicate. Our next item is a public comment. And we do not seem to have any public here, so we'll dispense with that one. The next is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Does anybody have any additions or corrections they want to make to the copy which has been submitted to everybody?
I just caught one typographical error on the first page. Under the second paragraph for recognition of former Chairperson Clint Folsom. In the second sentence, this is planning commission in 2008 where he didn't know what he, I believe should be was getting himself into.
Okay.
Anybody else have a correction or an addition? We have a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
I move to approve the minutes as corrected.
A second?
Second.
This was made by Mr. Laces. Am I pronouncing your name right?
You are, yes.
And seconded by Mr. Reese. All in favor?
I will put in the minutes that both Commissioners Stewart and Reese abstained because they weren't here.
True.
Okay.
That's right. Okay.
And did we take a vote on that?
Yes. Next up has to do with Chapter 16. Lisa, are we going to hear from you at this point?
Yeah, I'll let Fred do an introduction first and then I'll jump in here.
What we've got here is some cleanup work on the land use code. Or since it was updated the last time, well, it was updated primarily in 2010 and then we did a few modifications in, I believe, 2012. And these aren't modifications really to the code. It's more like picking up typographical errors and inconsistencies and also maybe some adding some clarifications, particularly like, for example, in the definitions or something like that. And so we went through the code and we've, over the years, the last couple of years, we've found these kinds of little problems. They're little issues. And so we want to clean that up. And that's what this is all about. So the staff report basically has a list of the changes. And I found it useful to look at it by looking at the list and then looking at the attachment, which is basically language that's lifted right out of the code and then redlined. So this is what it will look like as redlined in the new code or in the revised code. And if this is all passed ultimately by the board trustees, Chapter 16 will be revised. And then the website will be updated and the actual code, the written code, will be updated in the same manner. So that's what this is all about. And it's kind of up to you as to how you want to go through it. I would, you know, start personally, I think if you if you go article by article and or even if you say, okay, Article 1 and then Section 1 and go by section, whatever, you probably can get through this in a fairly, you know, short period of time. Because some of this stuff is really quite obvious. I mean, it's just grammar or it's notation that's wrong, A and a B is in the wrong space or whatever. So that's what this is all about. And there's nothing really substantive in here. There may be a couple of spots where we might spend a little bit of time, but that's about it. So it's up to y'all as to how you want to tackle it. Or we could go through it point by point. It's sort of what you think you might prefer. I think, what's the most, what do you think is the most efficient from your perspective?
I think if we go article by article and just inquire if there's anything that people want to comment on or do it that way.
Okay. And Lisa's going to put the parts of the code up on the screen so in case you want to look over there.
Yeah, we can kind of chat through them. I'll walk through, I'll walk through the exhibit document. I also have pulled up the actual code if we need to kind of go back and look at a greater context or if we get to a point in the discussion where the Planning Commission has additional questions. My name is Lisa Ritchie, I'm town staff. And we can start going through here. So the areas in red are the items that we have modified at this point. It's a little self-explanatory. Any new text is just red. Any text that we're deleting is red with the strike through it. So, starting out Article 1, just a clarification referring to Articles 3 and 4. Interrupt me, I guess, if you feel like you want to ask questions. If not, I'll just kind of go through them and as I'll, if necessary, explain a little bit of the logic behind some of these additions or changes. Section 2, or sorry, the next section is the definition sections of the code. These are the areas where we're providing clarification for terms that are used in a later portion of the code. Apartment, we're just clarifying that it is for rent. We are revising the bread and bed and breakfast establishment. A little more specific definition that temporary overnight lodging with or without meals, owner occupied or manager occupied building. It's not, it's not a necessity to change that one. Any comments on that one? Okay. Condominium, we're adding the term retail in there as a use. Construction trailer is a new definition and it's in response to an additional criteria for the temporary use permit later in the code. So, go ahead.
I had a question on that one.
Yeah.
It's been my observation casually that sometimes construction sites, I think construction trailer is sort of a trade term. Because nowadays they're going to those same containers that they use for shipping. For, I mean, that's a lock steel box to protect your tools and what have you, as opposed to what they had before. And I don't know if that should be commented upon or just
You know, we can certainly add it if
You're defining it as a wheeled or formerly wheeled. And this is basically a steel box. I don't know if that affects liability clauses in the future or whatever.
No, we can check on that. Do you think
Yeah, or other, you could have something like, or other similar shelter. That's not the right word either.
What are your thoughts, Liz?
Um, I guess, just to make sure I understand your question, is it whether we're too narrowly defining construction trailer to exclude a container that does not have wheels or was formerly wheeled?
Well, I, first of all, I don't even know how much difference it's going to make because I don't know where the terms might appear elsewhere. But it's neither a wheeled nor a formerly wheeled vehicle or what have you. It's just a steel box.
Lisa, can you speak to where construction trailer comes up in another place? I know there was an amendment.
Yeah, so the reason for this add is later in I believe it's Section, or 16. Article 16, 1616-10 under temporary use permits. It's in the language regarding when temporary use permits shall expire. And we're adding the clause, except for temporary use permits for construction trailers, which shall expire not more than 24 months after issuance of the permit. So typically our temporary use permits are six months in length. But just being that oftentimes a construction site is going to be operational for longer than that time, it just saves staff time and an understanding that something could be there longer than that. You know, as I'm thinking in response to kind of the steel box, you could, I do view those as for transport. You know, oftentimes those are transported via train or boat and they, you know, they've been used for transport or trucks. Yeah, so I think the for transport may cover that if we or we can broaden it slightly. I don't know, what are your thoughts?
Well, it is modified by the word vehicle, which I don't know that
And honestly, I just copied this from a different town code. I don't even
You could say also, or a prefabricated unit.
Or container.
Yeah, storage container.
Storage container, okay.
Is that designed to encompass trash dumpster?
Um, no.
No. Well, it's, it's a, it's a, basically people could go inside the thing. And it's used as an office, basically. Temporary office while they're on site. We have one over here right now.
So this doesn't apply to, you know, when everybody was getting their roofs redone, the trailers that they're parking on the street?
No. That would be, those I don't even believe that we gave a temporary use permit for typically. That's just run through the building department.
Okay.
Okay, we'll note that one and, and work on that. So the next one, garage, is just a clarification of an attached portion of a principal building. Gross floor area. Just to measure the gross floor area of non-residential buildings measured along the inside of the exterior walls. Just clarification there. This clarification to the definition of junk to include fabrication, waste, and then deletes of any material. It just wasn't really clear prior. The next section is a little longer. Open space is relatively long within the definition sections of the code. A couple of different areas come up. This first one is just a consistency issue. Typically, the definitions start with the word means. In our current code, we do not have a definition of trail. So we have included this as a definition of trail. All of these uses are allowed within the town typically, depending on the type of trail. So there's no policy issue or anything within this definition that is inconsistent with anything currently. This next one, private open space, some of you who have been on the Planning Commission, who were here during the Calmonte discussion, may remember this. And this is why we added this as a clarification. Calmonte and their application, essentially there, everything outside the building envelope is maintained by an HOA. They're not going to have fences. And so they were including those private yard spaces in their open space calculation. So this is just a clarification that calls this private space, private open space, which does not count toward an open space. So including private yards that are not fenced and are maintained by a common ownership entity such as a homeowners association. So this is just a clarification to that previous application.
They agreed with us, by the way, on that application because they had plenty of open space anyway. So it wasn't a problem for their open space calculation on that particular. So that's why we wanted to clarify this because it can happen again.
PD is in here. The definition that's here is not changing, but we're raising the question within the definition is the word minimum. However, later in our code, we do not define a minimum size for a PD. So two options, a couple of options. Later in the code, where staff is proposing a minimum size, we can talk about that later. Or should you determine that we don't want to define a minimum size and we can strike the, strike that language. The next one is just an addition, the word means. Roof mounted facility, a couple of clarifications here. Mounted to the roof, not the wall. And then removing some of this language here. All right. Article 2. Article 2, we had quite a number of changes. A lot of these. This first one. The following land use approval and notification chart. So in our current code, and it's not really obvious in the materials that we gave you, I can pull it up here in our code itself. And the reason staff is proposing this is we have currently two charts that deal with land use approval. One is kind of the land use approval list, which defines a number of applications and then the reviewing body and the approval body. Kind of the process that goes through it. The second chart that occurs later are the notice requirements for land use applications. So staff is suggesting that we combine these charts into one. Makes our lives a little easier. The other reason is that there's not all the land use applications in the notice requirement chart that is in the approval chart. So for consistency and just usability, we are proposing to combine those. So you'll see then what the combined chart would look like. We've added one of the application types here. If a temporary, temporary use permit, as we were chatting about with a construction trailer, it's a, it's a type of permit that is approved by, at a staff level. Someone wants to park an RV on their trailer or on their property or a construction trailer. What, what else might be an example, Fred?
A temporary use?
Yeah.
A bazaar.
A bazaar, okay. Yeah.
Put up a tent and, you know, whatever, for some reason this is not always there.
Sure. And so typically those are approved by staff. However, the owner has to post the property, just notifying so that neighbors can see that a temporary use permit's been filed. And if that gets objected to by a neighbor within 500 feet, then it would come to the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission would decide. So we've added that, it was, that's always been the process, but it wasn't obvious in the chart. Just added a clarification here for pre-application for both PD and FDP. That's just a staff level meeting with the applicant prior to the formal application. Added easement verification here. This was just a typo. We believe the process stops at the decision point. And then just a defining here of publication, mailing, or posting. Section 2 here, or of this section, just some clarifications here on our referral agencies. These are agencies that when staff receives an application, if it's appropriate, will mail the application to them for their comment and review. This was a typo. Here it was D, it should be C. We've added in this section here as part of the responsibility of the applicant that they need to notify owners of the mineral estates that are associated with any property development. Just clarifying. There, it's not, it's not a new requirement.
No, we do that anyway because it's required by state law, but we just didn't have a reference to that in the code. We felt we should do that.
This next section, we have a little bit of leeway here and I would really like your thoughts on regarding the posting of property when we receive a development application. Our current code defines the language that should be on the sign, but it doesn't define the size of the sign and the size of the font. And it can get a little difficult to read. So we're proposing a minimum sign size. There's a little, there's some flexibility there. And a minimum font size of two inches, which I checked, two inch font will work on that sign size if this is the language. So I don't know if any of you have any thoughts about that? If you've seen something that another community has done that you really think is, you know, a lot easier to, to read or if it really matters?
Is there an industry standard?
No. Not really.
No. Readability and then everyone figures out what that means.
You know, I mean, the intent of the sign is this property is under review. Here's the application. Here's the date of the public hearing. Here's where you can go for more information. So that's the intent of the sign, you know, essentially. I've seen some signs that are overly simple and then some that you would have to like, you know, stand there for five minutes to, to read through all the information that's on there. So
And so two inches was like the minimum size for everything to be able to
So if we keep this language, it's kind of the recommended language or the, the required language for the sign. It does fit. It's a little crowded, but I mean, it actually, it would fit. And two inches should be readable, you know? I mean, you're not going to probably read it from a car. But if you are walking, you'd absolutely be able to read it without getting right up to it.
You know, at the property line. So that's not necessarily the curb line. So
I just have a question about logistics. This is the applicant's responsibility to post. So I wouldn't know how to come about generating a sign that's three feet tall by four feet wide? Is that something that a Kinko's makes and
Yeah, it's pretty common for them to, to be able to
I think, Phyllis, didn't we at one time have our own sign? Or was that, we never had our own sign?
Some communities do that. They'll have signs that they'll give to the applicants and they can kind of
They fill in the blank.
Fill in the blanks. But I think they find that they don't get the signs back and they're just consistently, you know, having to print new signs. We put the onus on the applicant to, to do these signs. Typically, seasoned developers are really familiar with this. They have a contact at Kinko's or whatever, or they have their own, you know, typical sign that, that they put up. I think this is just ensuring that it's large enough to meet our standards. This is fairly consistent with the types of signs that we're seeing applicants put up. I think the intent is just to make sure it is large enough.
So Lisa, I may have missed this, but how have we addressed this as a town in the past?
I don't know.
Well, they put up the sign and, and basically we ask for either a picture or at least we get an affidavit that they did it. And if staff wants to go out and look at it, they can. We basically, you know, worked a little bit on the owner system. But I think in the past, people have gone out and looked at existing signs. And if it's like, it's like this, then maybe we talk to them about it. But you know, if you can't read the darn thing, it's useless, so.
I haven't been involved in any discussion about sign requirements, but typically when an applicant, I receive the affidavit and the photo, you know, just notifying us that, yes, we posted a sign. I rarely get questions. Well, I get, I take that back. Every now and then I'll get a question from a developer that says, do you have a standard for the sign? And I typically say, you know, you can refer to its language.
I don't recall anybody coming in and complaining to the town they couldn't read the sign. So, you know, so we haven't really, it's not an issue. But it could be. I mean, there was going to be signs going up for dealing with the town center. So we thought we'd codify it a little bit better.
And it's something that serves public interest too, you know? It's one of those things, if it's too difficult to read, I mean, you want it to be a little bit eye catching. Oftentimes, just having the sign there, folks will, hey, something must be going on. And particularly over, you know, along town center that they've been posting the signs just along the Caslin. So folks coming down the hill usually kind of can take a glance over at it.
So you know, so we're, we're basically dictating the size of the sign. But do we also need to have information on there about what type of post? Because I could see, you know, somebody posting something and then with our high winds coming and knocking it over, they could come back and claim that it was posted. Do we, do we need to have something in there that states, you know, what type of post it needs to be to ensure that the sign stays standing? Especially for a three foot by four foot?
Yeah, three foot by four foot is rather, it's a little on the bigger side than most of the signs that I've seen applicants put in. That's, that's a good thought. Absolutely. I don't know off the top of my head a way that we could define that though that provides them some flexibility. I'm trying to think, you know, if an applicant has kind of an existing sign that they utilize, making them change it. Or we just define it in such a manner that, you know, makes them put it in in a stable, secure way?
Well, the, the onus is already on the applicant to have the sign posted for the period of the 10 days prior to the hearing. And then they can take it down within the 14 days after. So inherently, there's already the responsibility that the sign must be sufficiently posted in a way that won't blow away or fall over. And it sort of puts that responsibility on them without having to tell them how to make it sturdy.
It hasn't, I haven't seen it to be a problem, the, the signs that we see posted. I haven't seen any since I've
But if you have a big storm or something, you got, you know, they're out there posted, you're probably going to go out and look at them. And if they're falling down, you can call the developer and tell them to fix it. You know, some, I mean, sort of it operates that way, kind of.
Yeah. And that's, I guess, and then kind of in response to this next requirement is typically in the past, they just, we require them to submit an affidavit that they have posted. Now with cell phone technology, everybody has a phone on their camera. It's just real simple for them to take a photo. We can look at that, kind of, you know, if it looks like it's secure, if it looks like it's in a good location. It's just an easy way for staff to, to take a look at that right off the bat.
But this revision provides us with some continuity and consistency?
Yes, I think so. Which also means we should put some thought into it, you know? So because if this is kind of the standard that we like going forward, if, if you think through over this evening or you'd like to come back to this one, that's fine. Just a clarification here. Section 1616. So this next one, Section 16640, we're getting into our zone districts. And this was a fairly large inconsistency. One of the primary reasons we wanted to get this code updated. Our RL zone, which is an original superior, the single family portion of most of original superior. There's an inconsistency in the language. This allows for two and three family residences. However, when you look later in the code in our schedule of requirements or schedule of uses. Here's where the inconsistency is. RL, two family dwellings are prohibited as well as multifamily. So two and three family dwellings then are prohibited later in the code. It's our understanding that the intent of the code all along for RL was to keep it single family.
Right. Correct.
So I don't know if any of you have any thoughts on that?
This was old language, I think. I don't know, somehow that came from the past. I don't know.
I would just also add that these are the intention statements. And the chart of scheduled uses is actually what I need to refer to and go by if you're seeing what is a permitted use. These are the intention statements. And so it's bringing intention statement or low density residential into conformance with those uses actually permitted by the schedule of uses.
The next one, so within our zone districts, we had the discussion of mixed use districts in two locations. They didn't have the same definition, but they have the same MU district heading. We, essentially what this update would do is pull it out of the residential zone district, pull it out of the commercial zone district, create a new kind of mixed use category all on its own and then kind of combine the definitions into a single coherent definition. So that's why it's stricken into places and then added in an additional place. We can go through it in the, in the added place. The clarification here for residential character street is just more of a semantics, language style, keeping it consistent with prior intention statements in the code. Again, striking mixed use districts from commercial and then we're adding a new Section 16654. Pulling mixed use districts out kind of as a separate zone district. Any thoughts on that language in there? Okay. All right. Schedule of use is just a in this table. It's staff's understanding that this word used to be maximum, really the intent on that is minimum. Fred, do you want to speak on those a little more?
Those are typos, as far as I'm concerned, because it doesn't make any sense. You've got a minimum lot width, you know, that, the idea is to, you've got a minimum lot width in this particular district. It can be bigger. So, you know, depending on how they wanted to plat it out, for one reason or another, you might have a lot that's bigger than that. But at least you've got to deal with a, with a minimum. So rather than the word maximum, you need to have the word minimum. I don't know how those words got transposed, but they did.
Okay. I'm just adding an additional clarification here for setback. There were, there was an inconsistency in the code regarding corner lot setbacks. Later in subdivision, under block standards, I believe, it required on a corner lot that the setback be the same as the street, both street front edge, which essentially would require kind of a 25-foot setback on both sides of the lot, which really leaves you with very little, if any, buildable area on a lot of the lots in town. So this is just clarifying that side yard on a corner has a varying setback from the typical side yard setback on between homes.
Why is there a superscript in the RM zone district there and the side yard setback?
This number 10?
The 10 to the 10th?
So those refer to some notes down here later.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, and we can flip through those. Density limits, just adding a clarification that this is dwelling units per acre. It's not changing anything there, just a clarification. Yeah, so all of these superscripts are just referring to notes down below. And this one, I don't know that we have to change. I know that we had kind of talked about, talked about it. I left it in, but maybe I should pull it out, Fred. This is the setbacks for single-family dwellings and two-family dwellings may have a minimum of five-foot setbacks up here under, in the RM zone.
That's an old, that's, that's an old thing from the past.
Okay.
All right, you want to ask George Coughlin about that?
Okay.
There was a relaxation on the side, I think it's the side setback, in the RM zone, which is multifamily. That's, that was in there for a long, it's been in there for a long time. So we left it alone.
Again, just adding setback in here, striking the word zone, it's not used elsewhere in that context. In prior codes, the term sketch was used. Typically, we refer to the word concept plan now, just consistency issue there. Section sixteen eight subdivision, re-subdivision, just a clarification that that's a replat, not a substantive change. Again, here we have sixteen eight, the lot standards. This is striking that inconsistency regarding corner lots. All right, so minimum area for a PD shall be one acre. Again, this was the definition where we had a reference to a minimum size. Currently, there is no minimum size in the code. Staff would propose one acre, but there's ultimate, there's a lot of flexibility there. I don't know that.
The deal is with plan development is how small, how small can a plan development be? Because it's, I know it became an issue in some places where there was, they were doing PDs on one lot. And that's really not the intent of plan development. They're more for large, larger, you do plan develop because the project is larger, it's got some unique features that cannot be accommodated by the standard zoning ordinance. So you basically negotiate zoning for a particular site. And the question is, is, you know, how, how small do we want to go here? And at one point, it was defined as one acre, then in the, when the code updated, it got kind of confused. It said in the definition it would have a minimum size, but the actual minimum size was never articulated after that last update or the one before that. So that was, that's an inconsistency. So in order to provide consistency, we think there should be a definition that the minimum size is one acre. I think developers will find even on a site that's one acre in size, that the amount of, of, or not administrative, amount of review and the amount of documentation that has to be prepared by the applicant and whatever for a plan development, for a site that's, you know, smaller than a one acre is, is almost financially infeasible. I mean, it's just, it's expensive. So why bother negotiate, negotiating some zoning issues under the PD process? We do PDs a lot in this community, but they're all for large, the larger sites. Because there's usually something where the developer can't really use the existing zoning to make it work.
Mm-hmm.
But not on a small site, it's probably on an existing lot on a block. And the question is, do you really want to go through the brain damage of doing that? And we've actually had that issue up here with the six lots that are along Maple Street, well, what doesn't exist there, but it's at the end of Maple Street, there's six lots. And at one point, they thought, well, we want to do a PD there. Well, once they got into it, you know, it's just easier to leave the zoning the way it is and, and we'll work out whatever issues we have with the alley and whatever, you know, as part of the billing permit process, because it's a use by right. So they didn't bother, they, they quit that idea, they gave up on that idea. And that's happened a couple of times, so the parcel's just too small to be bothered with going through this more elaborate plan development process.
And I think the potential areas where smaller acreage could come into play are some properties along Seventy-Sixth Street. So there are a few, there's one parcel back there that's about one acre in size, as well as an original superior. I think other than that, everything else is, already has planned development zoning, you know, other than original superior, like I said, Seventy-Sixth Street. So there's some flexibility there. I don't know if any of you have any thoughts on that?
So I do have a question. So going with one acre, does that benefit a developer or does that benefit our town? Or should it be larger? I guess that's the part that I'm not quite understanding.
Well, I think the, the idea is not to have so many of these little, small PDs. The prospect of that in town here, I don't know if it's, it's possible, we're never quite sure how things are going to change in relationship to original superior. We thought at one time the marketplace would have a heavy impact on the residential characteristics of, of original superior. But that really hasn't happened. I mean, people have made improvements to the residential lots and there's some buffer out there along Marshall Road for that, for the marketplace. And so what was feared is, has not really happened. And to, to, I guess, to say that we don't want a lot of little PDs, you could have a bigger number.
Mm-hmm.
Two acres. I mean, it's, there's no hard and fast rule there. It's more or less what you feel like. Do we want to be fooling with small PDs on small lots? And we don't think a PD on a, on a lot is worth, you know, spending a lot of time on. Well, then if it's not on a lot, then what, what is the size? Seems like an acre might, might fit in okay with what we have left, left to go. I mean, we did that storage facility out there on a PD, but it's five acres.
Yeah. It essentially kind of triggers if someone wants to come in and redevelop, you know, say half of a block in original superior, you know, that's kind of, that's approximately one acre. I don't think it's likely that we'd get any PD applications for a property that's small. As Fred was saying, it's pretty, the requirements, you know, on a developer is a lot, you know, they'd have to do one, they would. Where it kind of comes in the balance, I guess, is they would have to do, want to do something that is pretty unique and not really allowed at all in our use, which then PD is appropriate for, you know? So I think, and again, you know, there's.
Right. Then you have this issue of a PD is developed on a small parcel and everything around it is RL, you know, residential zoning. So you have this small PD in the middle. I'm not sure what that's doing in relationship to compatibility, the issue of compatibility between these developments and what exists. So that's another reason for not letting it get too small. Because otherwise, they're faced with a rezoning. That's a, you know, let's say you want to rezone a commercial, two lots to commercial right in the middle of the RL zone. Well, now we got all kinds of issues there because it, by zoning law, it could be considered to be a spot zone and that, through case law, has not been allowed. Those kinds of things come into play. It may or may not be, you know, in the interest of a comprehensive plan, but, so it can be an issue, it's just too small of a, of a deal to deal with a sort of a change, a real change in use.
Two acres, we also talked about, you know, a lot about two acres. I think, you know, it's.
I think the one there, we did round five acres worked out okay.
Mm-hmm.
This is something that's going to make your life easier to have at least the minimum of one acre.
Well, I don't know if easier. I mean, I think we need to define a size. I think it'd be nice to have a threshold, you know, to have a size that we can say, you know what, it really is not even appropriate to talk about doing a plan development and anything smaller than this, you just need to find a zone district or you need to work within the existing zoning. And then, you know, beyond that, it would be helpful. Two acres is also something that, you know, we've, we've talked about, you know, as well.
Yeah, yeah.
So, go ahead.
So for an entire block in original town?
Uh-huh.
Is that more than one acre?
It's just under one acre. Like six blocks or six lots?
What about 12 lots?
That's greater than one acre.
Block, so that would only be a half of.
Mm-hmm. Six lots would be half a block and that's just under one acre. But 12 lots is over one acre.
So I guess I would like to say a little bit higher than that.
Than one?
Are there 12 continuous lots in original town?
Not that are vacant, I don't think.
Not that are undeveloped, but if a property owner, you know, compiled or someone compiled some lots to do something, then it could become an option.
We do have this one up there that's six lots.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
It's butted in.
I want to say it's .94, but I could, I could be wrong.
It's close.
Yeah, six lots is, you know, it's, it's under one though.
The whole block is 12 lots.
So that's definitely over one.
That's definitely over an acre.
It's because it has the alley in between, so it not only has the blocks, but the alley.
Alley in between.
So I would be okay with increasing that.
To two?
Like to what, one and a half?
One and a half or two?
Two acres, to two?
Two?
To two. Sounds good.
I was reading.
So then we don't do, you know, that means, yeah, that would be fine because we can deal with that other one acre piece up there on Seventy-Sixth Street.
Mm-hmm.
We'll do something, just zone it something.
Okay. Or it can get pulled into whatever other.
It can get pulled into a different project, which is what we would prefer.
Yeah. No, we really wanted you guys to discuss this too, because there's.
All right, so two acres?
Two? Great. Anybody else?
That's good.
Two sounds good to me.
Okay. Moving on then. The next item is a clarification of a new criteria here under final development plan. So this is the approval criteria.
This is in the PD section.
Yeah.
Plan development section.
So as a final development plan comes forward, you know, this, this part of the code is listing the, the criteria for approval that the reviewing body would kind of evaluate the FDP application against. So this is just an addition of when an ambiguity exists in the application of a PD plan to an FDP, so essentially if we receive an FDP application and the PD plan that work that governs that application, or when a PD plan does not address a development standard, the applicable development standard of this chapter shall apply to the FDP. So essentially, if the PD doesn't talk about whatever application standard, it's just making sure that, that we are reviewing it against the code.
This happens, has happened a fair amount in Rock Creek, where the standard is not clearly defined and so, but it is defined in our code, so we default to the code. So we have a place to default to. I think there were a couple instances where we had no place to default to, so we just had to deal with it. But we do at times default to our code. And this happened in Rock Creek and I assume it, something's going to come up over there.
Yeah, I think there's a few areas in the town center PD that.
You can bet on it. I don't know what it'll be, but it'll be something. And if we've got it in the code, that'll be cool, it'd be nice. And then we can talk about that with developer, either stick with it or, or talk about it, go on, whatever.
All right. So this next section in our code deals with expiration of PD plans and FDPs. So there's, there's a couple of changes in here we can talk about. The first is the addition of language that just says, FDP shall be filed within 24 months of PD approval. If all FDPs are not filed within such time period, and we're striking some language here, the property in question may be reverted to its original zoning. Or in the case of property that was annexed and zoned PD, the property may be reverted to the AUR zone. No reversion shall occur until after a hearing by the Board of Trustees and a decision by the Board of Trustees rezoning the affected property. So the, essentially what this is saying is if the town board approves a PD, but no FDP, which is kind of the more specific site development plan, is submitted within 24 months, the town has the option, if it chooses, to revert that zoning, essentially take that zoning off the property and revert it back to whatever it was before. They don't have to do that, they can leave the PD zoning if the board approves or the board elects. So that's kind of the intent here. The next one we're striking.
Do you want to explain, do you want to explain, go up there to the second sentence, if all FDPs?
Oh yeah, Liz, we can talk about that here.
The word, at its face value, it says there, it means to me, and I talked to the attorneys about this, Liz, you can.
Play by it.
Up whenever, but at the, at its face, it says all FDPs. The reality of all FDPs being filed for the, for even the marketplace or the town center across the street is not realistic at all, because they will do it in a phased period of time and it's going to take time to do it. However, from a legal standpoint, you can have this 24 months, but if, for example, they, they haven't filed all their FDPs, they can file for an extension of the PD. They can always do that. Now, someone's going to argue that, well, if I have to file for an extension, that means somebody can say no. So I can see this being discussed in detail. And that'll be, make a developer nervous. Anytime he has a possibility of something being said no, then they, they get nervous. But for the time being, I'm okay with the, our attorney's rationale that they can always ask to extend their PD. That means it gives them more than 24 months to, to get going on the FDPs. Or if they haven't gotten going, or if they have gotten going, getting going faster on the ones they have left to go. In the market, or in the town center, we don't know how many filed development plans we're going to get, because we don't know, we know how he's going to plat it, but we're not going to, we're not sure is the, how many lots or how many blocks any one developer will buy at any one time to develop. So it's going to be a real variety of action over there.
Regarding the town center, the, the developer, when he had his PD approval, he had a separate vesting that defined his vesting rights.
Right.
Separate from kind of the, the rights that are defined in the code. So he negotiated an additional period of vesting based on some trigger criteria and things like that.
Right.
So, you know, if a developer doesn't like this language or feels like they know ahead of time they're going to need longer than 24 months, you know, they have that option to kind of negotiate that upfront as well, so.
Yeah, and the most, probably the future PDs we're going to have are going to be small, they're going to be smaller. they're going to be smaller. So that, this puts a little bit of fire under them to get going. I mean, the whole idea of plan development is you've got this piece of property and you sit there and negotiate zoning for it because they are proposing something that's unique. We're going to spend all this time fooling with this thing and talking about it and how unique it is, spending our time dealing with this issue and that issue. Well, then by golly, they ought to have enough, you know, they ought to be willing to get going on the thing once it's approved, you know, otherwise they might as well just rezone it to some standard zoning district and let it sit there, you know, otherwise everyone's wasting their time. That's the way I look at it. So in some ways it adds a little bit of fire underneath them to get this thing going so we're not sitting here. However, like I said before, there's at least two lots, I think, out in the marketplace that aren't built yet and will have to have FDPs in the future. And we've been okay with that because there's been progress generally all the way along in the marketplace, except for the last few years when we, basically it was almost built out and we've got two lots left or something like that.
All right, so the next one is just striking a grace period for filing a PD plan. And then this final strike is then just a reference to the FDP in relationship to the PD, which was kind of further defined and clarified up here in, in item A. So struck a lot of language, but I think it's a lot more clear. All right, section 161140, Submental Requirements, what do we have? Oh, just a minor clarification in a reference. Section 161250, this is regarding Notice of Approval for Vested Rights. This is just a clarification that gets us in line with the state statutes. Statutes require that we provide this notice within 14 days of approval. So that's just clarification in our code, aligning with the statutes. Section 1616, Temporary Use Permits, this is the connection then back to the construction trailer, which staff is proposing that we have kind of a separate timeline for construction trailers, allowing them for up to 24 months. Just understanding that oftentimes projects take longer than that and we're okay with allowing them, you know, a longer time period. Section 1620, Regarding Lighting, our current code refers to metal halide. We're proposing revising that to LED or light emitting diode. Our prior developments that have been approved recently, Town Center and Calmonte, we required LED lights, so this is just getting our code consistent with some of the prior approvals. LED technology is coming a long way in last few years and it has actually working pretty well out there, so we'd like to stay current there. This next one, section 1623, Regarding Trash and Recycling, this is a little unusual to have a goal listed in a land use code. It was just a kind of a prior political goal and staff is proposing striking the language of the goal, keeping the requirement, but striking the language of the goal. Section 1626, as we mentioned in the staff report, this section was updated in 2012. This are, these are just two clarifications getting us in line. The town has what's called an MS4 permit with the state, which is what is, governs our stormwater regulations, so we have to comply with, with state's regulations for stormwater. Those requirements, essentially there's a kind of a cutoff point of projects greater than one acre. We have additional requirements from the state, so this is just aligning that language in our code for areas greater than one acre. And this next one, section 162640, the language prior was a little more vague with regard to this drainage area, however, recently the town and a lot of the other municipalities around underwent a revision and to the Drainage Basin Plan with urban drainage and it's now titled the Coal Creek and Rock Creek Basin Major Drainage Way Plan. So this language just then ties this section of code to that master drainage way plan. And that's it. So I don't know if the Planning Commission has any comments or if you all have any suggestions for other items that you think should be visited or examined. I have the code, we can pull those up or?
Well, I think you guys did a really nice job on this and I imagine that it's just a lot of work.
Thank you.
I needed to fly spec a statute, so kudos to you.
Thank you.
I'd like to second that.
Well, it was.
Little run to the staff.
It's been a long time coming. Fred and Phyllis have kept a running list for a number of years now of all the little things that we've needed to get updated.
It's not, you know, not substantive change really, I mean. However, you may have some ideas or may get some ideas along the way, and I won't mention any ones that have come up and have gone away, but that we might ought to be able, might, might want to address in our code. There may be things out in, even in Rock Creek that might want to be discussed. Some of it you might have to run through your covenant review process, doesn't have anything to do with code, but there, there, there may be some issues that, topics that might come up that, where the code needs to be changed or added to. That ha, that can happen. If you, if you come across something, we ought to bring it up and we can discuss it and if it's got some legs to it, we'll put some meat on the bones there and study it and, but there's all kinds of things that are out there that people want to do with their lots or with their property, but it's not covered by the code or any one particular zone district, for example. So if you come across anything like that and think it's worthwhile, we can bring it up at Planning Commission and see if we can go forward and flesh that out. I don't even want to, do I want to mention one?
Yes, please.
An issue came up, has come up in the past, for example, of allowing granny flats on a single-family lot in Original Superior. In other words, a separate unit for grandma, that's the way, why it's called granny flats, but it's a separate unit that might be developed in the house or above a garage, something like that, where basically it's a relative but living there in a separate, in a kind of a unit that has its own kitchen and whatever. They're not sharing, you know, that kind of space necessarily with the rest of the family. Or it could be, it might even be a rental, which is what it starts to devolve to, just to, it devolves to a rental. And I know there's been some, I think there's been some requests to try to think about doing that in Rock Creek, you know, in a bigger house or whatever. So anyway, something like that, but no one really has really brought it to the level of saying, let's research this, let's lay out some draft regulations, let's discuss it and vote on it. So that's, that's an issue that's come up in the past, but it's kind of just filtered away and we haven't done anything with it.
I definitely get the questions, you know, folks will stop in my office and ask if it's something that we allow. We haven't really taken it up as a policy discussion, you know, at this time, and there hasn't been interest from a board level to look at this item, however, I don't know that that necessarily precludes the Planning Commission from, you know, talking about that and, and seeing. A number of our neighboring communities do allow, I think that a lot of communities title it as accessory dwelling units, you know, kind of a, it's not a full-fledged dwelling unit, but just kind of an accessory use on the property. Those that do have those regulations, they're fairly complex and they're fairly defined as far as kind of who can live there, the size, the setbacks, how it's related to the neighbors, the impacts and things like that. So there's, there's a lot that goes on in that particular discussion. So something like that, I think, is what Fred is suggesting. If there's anything that the Planning Commission has, you know, kind of wondered or, you know, you see in other communities that you think, you know, we could, we could consider for us, I think this would be, Chapter 16 is kind of the place to start. We can think about it too. I don't know where you all are at with, other than the two acres, we have the potential change in construction trailer definition.
Those are the only two.
Those are the only two. Do you feel like we need to continue the discussion into another evening or do you feel like this was sufficient? I don't, I'm not sure where, if you guys want to discuss them yourselves, I guess, kind of where, where your thoughts are.
I mean, I think we all agreed on the two acre. I mean, I don't think we have any issues with that and then if the staff is looking at, you know, at the addition of the different type of trailer, I don't see how that we would need to bring it back.
I agree.
I don't think so either.
I agree. Yeah, so do I. I feel confident moving forward.
Okay. All right, so as part of the packet that was emailed separately, we got it a little later than, than we were anticipating, actually, we got it earlier than we were anticipating. I didn't even think we'd have a resolution until tonight, so that was great. We do have a resolution that's included that you could, if you choose, vote to approve and we would just note as two conditions, those changes. Or I guess we should probably define the construction trailer a little more.
My suggestion would be, so you, you have the proposed resolution in, in front of you, which would be approving the proposed revisions that you received in red line to pass along to the board for their consideration and ultimate approval and adoption. I would suggest that because it sounds like everybody's determined that the two acres is an appropriate change that you would like to see in the code, we make that a condition in the resolution and then the other piece about the construction trailers, we make that a direction to staff to consider revising that proposed definition, looking into it further and coming back to the board as this passes up with further information about that and options for revising based on your discussion, recommendation on, on looking into the, the construction trailer definition. So I would recommend if you want to make a motion to, to adopt the resolution that's before you, the condition would be.
Those two points.
Yep. But, well, yeah, really just the point about the, and I'm looking for the, the section number in front of me for the two acres.
I think maybe also what I'm here is that we want to have.
Two acres was on page 19.
161020.
Yeah.
Sub nine.
Right, so it'd be moving to approve the resolution of the Planning Commission recommending approval of the updates to Chapter 16 with the revision to Section 16-10-20 subsection nine be changed to two acres instead of one acre.
And then the other just act as, like be a comment? Is that what you're thinking?
Kind of how we, we've done it before when we do conditions to the resolutions and then pass along comments.
So then do we want to have a final document before we vote on this? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, my suggestion is we can keep the, the document as proposed, as you received, and then you make the oral condition that you suggest the revision to Section 16-10, finding it again, dash 20, sub nine, to make that two acres. Staff will make that revision as it passes up to the board, but that way we can not have to bring another document back in front of you at the next meeting simply to, to make that.
So the Board of Trustees get the final document.
Corrections, yeah. Right, so they'll see the revised document with the, the two acre instead of one acre and then staff can make a recommendation on the, the construction trailer definition at that time.
Yeah, one of the things that the Board consistently asks for when they receive something from the Planning Commission is within their staff report, so they'll, they'll get a similar staff report that I would present to the Planning Commission, but in addition, it'll have a section for Planning Commission discussion. So all of the, you know, kind of relevant discussion items will be brought forth to them and called out for their attention. So then, yeah, the corrected document then would be presented to the Town Board with this change.
Well, I think that makes a lot of sense because it doesn't sound like Planning Commission wants to deal with this again because you've already dealt with it really well and you went through it all.
We went through it thoroughly, line by line, for practical purposes.
And at this time, we don't, this isn't on the Board's agenda in March, so I will have to double check. I'll keep you posted about when this will come back to the Board, or when this will come to the Board for their approval, but I'm guessing it'll be at least into April.
There is only one board meeting in April and not so much.
March, yeah.
First meeting in March, not the second meeting.
Second meeting, they're taking off for spring break, so I, yeah, assume this, this probably would come to them in April, but we'll keep you posted on that. All right.
So we will need an actual motion and if you, if you look at page five in your packet, there's suggested language in the middle of the page under the heading motion for whoever would like to.
Well, I'll, I'll move to approve a resolution of the Town of Superior Planning Commission recommending approval of the updates to Chapter 16 of the Superior Municipal Code with the additions that we talked about being a condition to Section 161020 subsection nine being revised from one acre to two acres and a directive for the, for planning to further explore the definition of construction trailer in Section 161-70.
All right, there's been a motion made by Mr. Laces, a second.
Very good, a second motion.
We have a second, want to take a vote? Everybody ready? If you indicate by raising your hands if you're in approval of this resolution. Thank you. Are there any other staff announcements or matters that we would need to address at this time or want to?
Yeah, so we have a couple of things as far as staff announcements go. First thing would just be a little bit of an update for Superior Town Center. You may have noticed some construction activity has resumed across the street there over the last few weeks. They are wrapping up excavating for the foundation for the ice portion of that facility. Should the weather do what it's anticipating this week and warm up, the plan is to actually begin pouring the footers later this week, as long as the weather stays warm enough. So that's the immediate plan over the next few weeks. And again, we've kind of been touching on this, over the course of this spring, we're anticipating receiving an FDP amendment to split out the BVI building as it was approved into two separate buildings, which would, the ice facility would be one building, Metal Call Office Building is anticipated to be a second separate building, so it would have an, an FDP amendment to, to split those properties out. That's probably coming this spring. As well, we're anticipating a couple other applications that are Town Center related, potentially some residential. Over the next six to nine months, I would anticipate we, we may start looking at some residential applications over there. Let's see, oh, the Rogers property is the property in Original Superior on the west side of McCaslin, where the cows are, the farm is there. That's currently zoned medium density residential. It was purchased by the Town Center developer probably a year and a half ago when the longtime property owner passed away and he's been working with the town. The town is also, at this time, in Planning Commission has seen this, working on some drainage improvements for Coal Creek Corridor in there to mitigate a lot of the floodplain. The property or the, the developer owns some of that property and so there's, there's going to be potential re-subdivision, a little bit of re-subdivision and maybe some land swaps in there to deed some of the property in the floodplain to the town. Don't have the specifics on that, but I would anticipate the Planning Commission would be seeing that later this spring, maybe early summer. Let's see, oh, I want to invite the Planning Commission Monday evening at the regular board meeting, there's going to be a concept plan presented for the Way property, which is along 76th Street, just north of the Guardian Storage. There's about 12 acres back there. It's not currently annexed into the town, however, it's within the town's planning area, so it's between the town boundary and Boulder County open space.
It's kind of sandwiched in there behind the sand.
Yeah.
Although you, the C-Dot.
Kind of between C-Dot and, and Guardian. It's about 12 acres in there. And the property owner is going to be presenting a concept for senior housing. Similar, the, the example that he used locally is the Balfour over on Highway 42, just north of the King Supers in Lewisville. So I think it's something kind of of that scale, of that design. So we'd encourage the Planning Commission to attend or at least watch the meeting online if you can, just to get your, get your thoughts on that. So they are going to be part of the regular board meeting, not sure where on the agenda, maybe 7:30-ish?
I think it's on the presentation.
Okay. So this coming Monday on the 23rd. So this coming Monday on the 23rd, if you're available. And then the final thing that I kind of wanted to chat with you, Phyllis, if you want to turn the lights down a little bit. Over the last week or so, the town launched a new website, so staff's been working pretty hard on this over the last number of months to revise our website into this new format. Kind of the immediate things that are Planning Commission-related are, you have our Planning Commission page, it's kind of a definition of when your meetings are. We do have links to all of your emails, just FYI, as well as just a way for folks to send an email to all of you, that's what we would typically recommend, so you all are out there. And then the other items that are a little different, if you are used to our old website, we broadcast our meetings with a software that we call Granicus, they're the provider. We've revised the interactive page here from Granicus for our new website. So Planning Commission is here under your own separate section, and, oh, we're actually going live right up here, so we could watch our meeting now up here, and then these are the prior ones. Over the next few weeks, in the past, one of the major changes of this is the minutes. And so in the past, we had, minutes were on a separate page in our website. Granicus, we've since added a kind of a minutes component to our Granicus software, and that's going to be rolling out over the next couple of weeks. And minutes are going to look a little different, and so I don't know if they'll be that way in your next packet. I don't know, Phyllis, if you want to. Probably, okay. So the next time you see minutes, when you see minutes for this meeting, they're going to look a little different, and they're going to be available for folks to view here on this Granicus page, so there'll be an Agenda, Video, and then there'll be a Minutes tab over here. So if you have any questions when you start to see that, you can let staff know. The other item that I kind of wanted to get the Planning Commission's opinion on...
There's a question on that. So like, when you hit Video, it'll just pop up and start running on your computer? So let's say you want to look at a Town Board meeting or...
Yep, so if we were to go to our last Planning Commission meeting, just would bring it up. It has the Agenda off here to the side, so there you are.
Okay.
Last meeting, yeah. It has the Agenda off to the side. The other thing that we've begun to do is to have more of an interactive Agenda. The older Agenda was just kind of the static PDF. This new one is, it has documents linked into it, so you can go a little deeper into the Agenda, and it'll have the big documents, you can just go section by section. So we hope that it's a positive change. The other item is...
Well, I was going to ask you a question. Let's see, yeah, when, what's the turnaround now like for this meeting? Is it up on the website five days later?
The videos are up typically the next morning.
Really, that quick?
Yeah, and that's, that part's not changing, so it kind of depends on how long the meeting was. A rule of thumb is however long the meeting was, that's kind of however many hours it takes after the meeting to, for the encoder to upload the meeting to the website. So this one would probably be, you know, available later tonight. Some of the Board meetings aren't really available till early the next morning. The minutes will take a little longer. I don't know, Phyllis, if that's going to be a lot faster for the minutes to be posted to the website?
My thought was that the minutes wouldn't be posted until they're approved by either the Board or the Commission.
Okay. So you won't see the minutes then until they're approved?
Until they're approved.
So it'll be a number of weeks, a couple of weeks then probably before the minutes are available, but the video's available. And one other thing that the minutes do, the new minutes style, is actually, it has links there that link back to the video. So if you click on a section of the minutes, it'll link you directly to that video, so you can actually go, and the intent is to not have Phyllis try and interpret, you know, and summarize some of the comments, but just to go directly to the video so that the intent is clear, so that's...
The action will be there, whatever action is taken.
Okay.
The discussion will be the week.
So in the past, we have emailed you all the PDF packet. We're happy to do that, or what, another suggestion, you know, we've been talking about is just to email you the link to this webpage and let you access the Agenda and the packet via the webpage. So I don't know if any of you feel like you really want that separate packet emailed, we're happy to do it, or if you just want a link here, or we can try this for a while, and if any of you feel like, you know, you're missing it, we can go back.
I prefer a link, actually.
Yeah, you too.
Okay, you're all good with that? All right, well, we'll do that from now on. I'll still send an email letting you know when the packet's available on the website and if there's any issues or questions. Also, this is something that the Town Board has, this is not something we provide to the Planning Commission, but if any of you have iPads, this Granicus software is really compatible with iPads, and if any of you want to talk to me about some of the additional functionality, that if you want to use your own personal iPad for packet viewing at home, things like that, you can let me know, and I can direct you to an app you can download, and it provides some editing and note-taking capability on the Agenda via an iPad, so you can talk to me offline if that's something that you're interested in. So, any questions about this? Okay, we're excited, it's been a lot of fun. Big project. Anything else? That's all I can think of. Okay. All right.
Anything else, Phil? If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I move to adjourn.
Second? So be it.
All right. So what is, and I can show you online.
I'll have to steal the iPad back from the kids.